It's a little after 8:30 in the morning and I have a call to order the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Kent County Board of Commissions. Please proceed with the roll call. Adam Burke.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Skaggs, Woodin, Womack.
Present.
Bolkowski.
Present.
Legrand.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Sparks.
Teal.
Here.
Vice Chair Bravy.
Here.
Commissioners Coleman.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Bolter.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Antonor.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Chair Steck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 15 members present, four absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. I will now call on Commissioner Hennessy for the invocation.
This is the meeting that follows Mother's Day, and I specifically think of my own dear sister and her husband, who while not parents directly, have mothered many. And so this is from Hannah Armcardon, United Methodist Church Minister. It's to the moms who are. To the moms who are struggling, to those filled with incandescent joy, to the moms who are remembering children who have died, and pregnancies that miscarried, to the moms who decided other parents were the best choice for their babies, to the moms who adopted these kids and loved them fierce, to those experiencing frustration or desperation and infertility, to those who knew they never wanted kids, and the ways they have contributed to our shared world, to those who mothered colleagues, mentees, neighborhood kids, and anyone who needed it, to those remembering moms no longer with us, to those moving forward with moms who did not show love, or hurt those they should have cared for. Today is a day to honor the unyielding love and care for others we call motherhood, wherever we have found it and in whatever ways we have found to cultivate it within ourselves. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our next item is the Special Order of Business, and we have with us this morning Mr. Bill Ward from Network 180 to give us a presentation on the crisis continuum of care.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here today. Over the past five years, even before I came to Network 180, Kent County has undertaken a pretty significant deep dive into creating a crisis center, which then evolved into a crisis continuum. And I'm here today to talk about where we have gotten to after these five years. We couldn't have gotten here without the support of the county commission, so I want to thank you without the leadership of Chairman Steck, who's kind of shepherded this process from the very beginning. Beginning in 2017, we really came together as a community. The health systems have stepped up to be part of this planning process. The major providers in the county, Pine Rest, Hope Network, Network 180, Mary Freebed, have all come together, Forest View, have all come together to create a plan for a crisis continuum. It took several meetings with community stakeholders. It took a lot of hard work from the Population Health Consortium, which was that group that I just named, as well as the Consensus Work Group, which was a broader base stakeholders. After several consultants, both nationally and locally, we've come up with a plan now that will identify and help individuals in crisis on a 24-hour basis, no matter whether you're in the public system or whether you are privately insured. The idea behind it is to create this No Wrong Door. What is this No Wrong Door? This No Wrong Door is an expanded level of crisis services depending on the event that's going on with the individual. It starts off with our highest level of care, which is what we're calling our Crisis Stabilization Unit. It talks about expanding the current access that we have for mobile crisis. We are creating, which will be opening, I believe, next month, a peer respite center, which will be a drop-in center, and I'll explain a little bit more about what that is. Enhanced Substance Use Disorder Center, and enhancing capacity for psychiatric access for children and adolescents, as well as fast-tracking adults who are currently stuck in the emergency room. What is the Crisis Stabilization Unit? Well, the Crisis Stabilization Unit will be a 24-hour access center, which can have drop-off by law enforcement, EMS, or walk-in service. It is a secured facility, and it will be on the St. Mary's campus. It has the capacity of screening an individual immediately, determining the level of care that they need, and moving them to that level of care. Whether that level of care will be an inpatient facility, or whether that level of care will be to stay at the secured facility, which they can stay at for up to 72 hours, or move to a lower level of care, whether it's crisis residential, whether it's referral back to their outpatient provider, or whether it is linkage for screening. What is Expanded Mobile Crisis? Well, currently, we have one mobile crisis team for Kent County. That team operates in three different ways right now. One, a call will come into the access center at Network 180. We will determine that it is a crisis event, and then we will send out two members of our crisis mobile team to respond to that, the incident, assess the situation, and get that individual to the level of care that they need to get to. The second is a response from law enforcement, where law enforcement will call us when they are on scene. They will determine that it is a mental health crisis and not a law enforcement activity, and then we will send the two team members out there to de-escalate the situation, and again, determine the level of care. And then the third is a co-response, where we are going out with law enforcement. We understand that there's a law enforcement activity that needs to take place first, and then our clinicians are right behind them to step in and then do what they need to do. Right now, like I said, we have one team for the county that operates 24/7 for adults and operates, I believe, 18 hours a day for kids and adolescents. The real need is for three in the county, and we feel that that would adequately address the needs of this community. Peer respite. The Peer Respite Center is a really unique crisis intervention for an individual who knows that they need help. It is a home. It's going to be located here in Grand Rapids, and it'll be operated by individuals with lived experience. These are individuals who have gone through these types of crises. It's what's called a bedroom model. So you knock on the door, you get checked in, you stay for like four to five days, and then these individuals who have already gone through this will work with you in a non-clinical peer-to-peer activities to work an individual through their crisis so then they can return back to the community. Currently, we have a small substance use disorder program that's running at Mel Trotter. This program will expand that, and actually, it's actually, this program has already been funded. It's about $250,000 extra that we were able to fund for Mel Trotter on top of their original budget, which allows them to expand the number of people they can hire, and then we can operate at the need for the facility. So that program should be online by the end of June as well. We've all heard the horror stories of parents who take their kids who are in crisis to Helen DeVos, and that child languishes there for days because there is no place for them to go. What we are in the process of doing is not only trying to enhance the inpatient crisis, inpatient capacity for Kent County, but at the same time also entice the two inpatient providers in Grand Rapids to take these children. A child that needs an inpatient placement is probably the hardest placement that Network 180 has to find right now. Oftentimes, we are finding that placement on the east side of the state, so then we are taking that child and we're putting them in an ambulance, and we're sending them all the way over to Oakland or Macomb County because that's the only place that we can find. So we are working with Pine Rest and Forest View to enhance their capacity for child and adolescents. And part of this will be if, and this is only for Kent County facilities, if they take that child within 24 hours after they get to Helen DeVos, they will be able to earn an enhanced fee, because we want to keep kids in Kent County so their parents can work with them as they get ready for discharge planning. The fast-tracking for inpatient is the same philosophy. This will be for both for Forest View and for Pine Rest, where they can earn a fee on top of their regular daily rate if they take an individual within 24 hours who may be stuck at one of the three area hospital emergency rooms. So again, what is the end cost right now? Currently, we're spending about $8 million on crisis services in Kent County, and that's the majority of those individuals are on Medicaid or uninsured. The idea behind this plan is to enhance it no matter your insurance status. We want to stop asking for insurance cards at the door, and we want to respond to the crisis in the moment and get that individual to the level of care. We anticipate a need of another $12 million to fund that, some of which will be capital outlay. It costs money to build the CSU and enhance our mobile crisis. There are some operational startups as you're hiring folks, and then we anticipate what we're calling the non-public privately insured individual that will cost about $5.5 million. This pilot, we anticipate, will run for one year, and we have already gotten interest from the privately insured companies in Kent County that they were interested in actually signing up to add this benefit to all of their products, whether it's a PPO, whether it's a HMO, whether it's Medicare. So on an ongoing basis, we anticipate by 2023, late 2023, that this benefit will be afforded to everyone that lives in Kent County, and that we will no longer, it will be self-sustaining going forward between the current Medicaid that we receive in Grand Rapids plus the privately insured individuals. So in summary, this really is a No Wrong Door approach. It really is to solve a community need. I think we have a fragmented crisis system right now. You seem to be better served in a crisis capacity if you are in the public system. Right now, the privately insured benefit is very limited to either inpatient, which is not always a good option for an individual in crisis, as we saw with the continuum I just laid out. Right now, the public patient is afforded a lot more tools, would I say, in the toolbox. This would expand those tools to everyone in the county. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, Commissioner Antonor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Bill. This is really exciting, and I think well overdue, and I think it's wonderful. One of my questions is, I guess, when you collaborate with law enforcement, there's some cases where, you mentioned law enforcement getting their first and calling in the situation. A lot of times, it'd be nice if that was sort of reversed, so law enforcement knows what they're rolling up on as far as the status of the mental health that's taking place, whether someone's bipolar or can have violent episodes, so they kind of know going in what to expect. That may determine how they're going to react on that call, because, you know, it may be a situation where they want to back off a little bit. I was just wondering how that relationship is going with area police, and if you're working on that model to determine the status before you get there.
Yeah, and those three examples are not the be-all of what we're envisioning mobile crisis to be. We very much do envision that the reverse would happen, where a clinician, the clinicians would get on scene and say, "This is not a situation that we can devise first, and we really do need law enforcement to come out." And that happens as well. The idea behind it is, and I know the sheriff's here, we meet probably weekly, our teams, trying to figure out how to get this model right. So I don't have a perfect answer for that because we haven't completely designed the whole model.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'm wondering, Bill, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner Legrand.
Hi, Bill. I just, I wonder if you could just elaborate a little further on the law enforcement, because you say Kent County law enforcement, but you're not just talking about the sheriff, right? We're talking about police in the, in those municipalities.
So currently, right now, the two, or I would, I say two, but it's really one team. The mobile crisis team for kids and adults is responding anywhere in the county. So one of the things that mobile crisis has really had a seen, an uptick, is we've been responding to the school districts. So I think that's probably been our biggest jump, is the schools are having us come in almost daily now. We get a call, whereas 12 months ago, we were probably getting five or six calls a week from the schools. So the mobile crisis is really, you go when you get called, and we determine if it, even if you're going out there and you're just standing there to be support, that's what they're there for. So right now, we are responding with GRPD, we are responding with the Kent County Sheriff's Department, and we've begun preliminary talks with the other area police departments. I know that East Grand Rapids is really pushing me to make sure when this thing is going to get open and when it's going to get launched. So I, we are, we are hearing the need from all of the communities, and we are being very measured in how we design this, because the one thing I don't want to do is overpromise and underperform. So I think right now, we are handling what we can handle based on one team, but we really do need to know that we need two more teams.
And then I just wanted to know if you could address when the Crisis Stabilization Unit, when, when do you expect it to be up and running?
We are hopeful that it's going to be spring of next year. The problem that we're all facing right now is lead time on materials has really been pushed out, given just the shortage of everything right now. The other thing is, we don't have all the money secured right now. So right now, it's a $20 million project. We have commitments for $8 million, which is from Network 180's existing budget. So I have made lots of trips to Lansing, and I am hopeful and confident that we may be successful in this budget season.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Good to see you, Mr. Ward. The, I guess, well, the quick comment is, this is excellent. Definitely support this. Maybe I'll ask the chair to invite you back for a broader conversation about what we're doing further upstream, because again, you know, we've all heard the old cliche of, you know, we're scooping babies out of the river. Why don't we go upstream and ask them why we're throwing babies in? You know, especially with the kids, and the mental health, you know, crisis with our kids and adults. So what, what additional resources are really needed upstream? My question, and maybe you could just forward it along to us, because anytime you try to boil it down to one slide, you get into trouble, or at least I do. The cost slide has $12 million. You just said $20 million. What startup? What's ongoing? The $5.5 million of private insurance, but how much is Medicaid? Is the private insurance basically the annual program funds? And so I'm just kind of confused and...
I have a much more detailed budget that I'm happy to forward to all the commissioners that would probably answer all those questions that you have. I didn't want to put it up there and confuse everyone, but we do have that. The other piece of it is, I was told I was only going to have 15 minutes today, so I could tell you about all the other wonderful things that we're doing at Network 180.
And I know that's, that's a, that should be a standalone opportunity, and I know you are, so. But then please do forward at least to one commissioner.
I'll get it to everyone.
I'm sure the chair has seen it a few times.
I've seen it many times. We'll go ahead and distribute that out to all the commissioners. Commissioner Woodin. Thank you. I'm sorry. Commissioner Skaggs was next.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for coming in. Okay, so I guess I'm going to go off a bit of Commissioner Bolkowski's question, just some basics. I think under cost, you said that this is, that this would, after the startups, you think it's financially sustainable without state, federal, county funds, other than what's coming through insurance?
Correct.
And then when you talk about, and then I just want to make sure I'm clear here, because math is not necessarily my strong suit, but we're talking about numbers that are less than a handful. We've got two mobile units.
We have a team of 12, which respond both to adults and children. We have specialty individuals on each one of those teams, so on that singular team. But, so there'll be some clinicians that only respond to adults, some that respond to kids, but right now, it's supervised under one team.
Okay, so when you say, when you say there are, there are two units on, on the road, that's a shift.
Not necessarily. I believe there are 12, so sometimes we'll have four on, sometimes we'll have two on. It really depends on the day, the time of the day, the need that we've identified. So we always have children clinicians on during the school hours, because we know that we're going to have to respond there, and we get a lot of calls from families in the early evening, and then later at the night, it tends to be more adults. So the, the shift differential will be made up based on what we're seeing as far as calls for service.
Okay, and then when you want to add, so when you say that we want to add three new units, how many people would that be?
I believe it's 24 more, so that would cover three, for a total of 32, if my math is correct.
24 plus 12?
36. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I'm doing math in my head. I'm sorry. Commissioner Skaggs, I'm a social scientist, so that's, you know.
I got, I got the numbers in front of me, so no, no worries. Thanks.
Guys are sharing your misery there. All right. Now Commissioner Woodin. I'm sorry, were you done, Commissioner Skaggs?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. I was, Commissioner Bolkowski had taken my question, though not the cliche I was going to use, but I yield the floor.
All right. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. Bill, thanks for being here. Thanks for your passion for mental health. So my question, I mean, we'll, we'll put this in place, which is fantastic, but there's still going to be situations where law enforcement rolls up on an incident that has some type of crisis with it. How many of the local units, whether it's a city police officer, the county, give their officers enhanced training on how to deal with people with mental health issues when they roll up? Are there cities that provide that? Some do it better than others?
So right now, the initiative in Kent County is for all police departments. It's called Crisis Intervention Training. So we offer CIT training. I believe there was a class two weeks ago, and I believe it was a cross-section of law enforcement departments from Kent County. I don't know off the top of my head how many officers have been trained, but I'm happy to get back to you on that one. I know that it is an ongoing initiative that I believe takes place almost quarterly now, because it's a recognized best practice as interventions are necessary in, in context.
Do they sometimes include, like, fire department people?
I don't know about Kent County. I would have to get back to you, but it was, when I was in Wayne County, we had rolled it out to law enforcement, fire departments, and then we actually got into the schools with, with teachers. So that would be my plan to do that as well here.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, thank you for the discussion of the Expanded Mobile Units for help during these health crises that police officers may face when they're in the cities and the townships. As you spoke about the budget, 11.7 to get started, and estimated up to $20 million, and you talked about going to Lansing, you head to county today. Have you had any discussion with some of the larger cities about their budget and helping with some of that capital expenditure to get started?
Yeah, we're, we're very excited to be included in the Grand Rapids budget. Grand Rapids has, in their proposed budget, they have $700,000 in there for a mobile crisis response team that would be dedicated directly for the city, which would be embedded at GRPD's headquarters, much like two years ago, the city contracted with Network 180 to join what they call their HOT team, which is the Homeless Outreach Team. So every day, two Network 180 employees, two police officers and two firefighters walk mainly the Hartside District, working with the homeless population. So similar model, we've had similar success. I mean, one of the, one of the, the, the goals of these programs is to really divert individuals from misuse of the emergency room, or being booked in the jail when they really don't need to be in the jail. Just on that program alone, we've diverted over 100 individuals from emergency room use, and over 70 individuals from going into the county jail. So those are real numbers. We know that we're going to get good outcomes. It's good outcome for that individual, as opposed to, that's not where they belong. They really need to be working with clinicians.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to compliment Bill and, and you, Mr. Chair. A lot of you know I'm not real patient, and Commissioner Steck had asked me five years ago to serve on a committee to look into this, and at the time, we were just looking at a building. And I just did not have the patience and, or the time and effort it took and had to come up with that committee, and it's, it's just so great to see this come to fruition. And in my previous job, knowing, I know you mentioned Helen DeVos Children's Hospital, that is a real serious concern in this community, and they had a child there one time for 412 days because the private insurance that she had stopped paying after two days, and they couldn't find placement for her. And that's a very real thing. You have violent kids, you have... You have violent kids, you have kids that you, you, they're, they're, they're basically adult-sized children, and it's just a real thing in this community. So I, I want to really, really compliment you, Bill, and all your work. I know you're kind of the fixer. You come in to some of these situations and, and you have, and, um, I'm just so proud to see this come together, and I really hope that we look at some ARPA funding and some support, uh, for this for our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor for a second.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I just wanted to kind of go back, uh, to the law enforcement aspect of this, and maybe Sheriff could, could possibly answer this question too. When you, when you, um, respond to a call and you have someone that's mentally unstable, and you evaluate that person as being potential risk to himself or others in the future, uh, that name becomes a permanent part of your records, I'm assuming. Are those records then shared with the Sheriff's Department in some capacity? Sheriff, we used to have, I, refresh my memory, I think it was NCIC or NCIS that you would,
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
We used to do a file check and they'd come back clear.
Right. So, um, the only mental health records that would be part of NCIC would be, uh, the Declaration of Mental Incapacity, and, um, those are very rare. That's generally not the circumstance. What we might find in law enforcement records would be history, uh, what's called CAD history, which is computer-aided dispatch. And that would mean we've been to this location or dealt with this subject before, and these are, um, notable things that happened during that, that might be an officer or subject caution for next time. It might be a safety issue. So, the other really important tool is what was said when the call came in and what, um, the person declared might be the problem. So, and I'll just second what Bill's saying, um, this is a model that's under development. And it's important that we kind of wander through this with factual information and not people's perspectives about what should happen. Because as much as I don't want to put a law enforcement in a situation, uh, that they don't need to be there, I also don't want to put a clinician in a circumstance where they're in very dangerous risk for their own personal safety, because that also puts risk on the subject that they're there to, to help. So we try to really hone in the questions that are being asked and assimilate, uh, wherever they're being asked, so we're getting the same details that each other needs. So if the call comes into the crisis line, they know what we're going to need, and if the call comes into nine-one-one, we know what they're going to need. And I, and I feel very strongly about the co-response model, because it's much easier to, um, to adjust as the needs are apparent when we get there. Um, and, and to very quickly then adjust if it's not the right call initially. And keep in mind, eight hundred and fifty square miles, it can be over an hour to respond if you didn't call the crisis team and you needed to, or perhaps you sent the crisis team and now the Sheriff's Department needs to be there, or whatever police department. So that co-response model is, it appears to be on a larger scale, probably the best approach, unless there's no indication for a public safety issue, or there's no indication for a mental health issue.
Yeah, and, and I totally get that, especially the first time this, growing this program, once we get into it, and let's say it's not a co-response, it's just a mental health emergency vehicle goes out there and you, you analyze there's potential, it just would be nice two years from now, that when you know who the individual is, you can do a file check before you roll up on them, and there is something shared from you over to the Sheriff's Department. So that information is not separate, you would, you would have, as part of the NCIC, I guess, a local version of NCIC.
It's illegal.
It is?
Yes. So, we can't, HIPAA would require, um, them not to share the medical information, and, um, Criminal Justice Information Systems, which is run by FBI, has legal prohibitions against us sharing law enforcement, but we both get to share a co-experience.
I got you.
So, um, again, we'll stick in our computer to very specific officer safety or subject safety cautions. You would generally see things such as, um, uh, multiple person response or supervisor response, history of unstable behavior, not a diagnosis, but that's what would be in our lean system and in their system. And it would also show that we've had a history of co-response there, which there'll be enough information for us to know to, to be very careful, but, and consider our approach, but not, not details about their diagnosis, and that will never be there.
Okay. And is that, uh, illegal by state law or state constitution?
Federal law.
Federal law, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for highlighting another one of our speed bumps, Commissioner. Anything else? You know, Bill, maybe one thing, you, because you mentioned with respect to the hot team, which is, uh, which is a singular experience, we've already identified over a hundred diversions from emergency rooms, seventy diversions from jail, um, and these diversions result in enhanced care to the individuals. On the flip side of that, can you talk a little bit about what's the, what's the economic impact of diverting them from jail and from emergency rooms into this system?
Well, I mean, I can't quantify it in dollars, but that's, those are resources in dollars that would have been otherwise spent, um, you know, to address that individual's crisis, whether it was be sitting in an emergency bed, which would be an uncompensated care. So that means that hospital's going to have to write it off, or if they're being booked into the jail, I mean, that's going to be county resources that are going to have to be spent to book them in there and then house the individual in the jail. So, um, it's, it really frees up public resources that, um, otherwise don't need to be used.
Good. Other questions or comments? If not, thank you very much, Bill, um, and thank you for continuing to stay on task with this project. It's a complicated one. We're getting close, and hopefully, um, by this time next year, we'll have a complete package of all six of these pillars in place. You can come in and describe them for us. Thank you. All right. Next item of business is public comment. If there's anyone here from the public that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners, this public comment is related to agenda items only, and if you wish to do so, please identify yourself, provide us your address, and you have up to three minutes. I don't see anyone from the public wishing to address this time, so we'll move to item seven, and I will call on Commissioner Hennessy to address the consent agenda.
Thank you. Um, I move the consent agenda for today, and it includes one resolution for CDVG, um, income appropriation to the Kent County Community Action Program.
Thank you. It's our support.
Support.
Boarded by Commissioner Wooden. Discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Jones. Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We will now move to item eight A of our resolutions, and I will again call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Um, I move the Resolution, um, sixty-two. And it is an amendment to our Kent County Employees Retirement Plan and Trust. Um, it's the termination of the Parks Department Retiring Savings Plan.
Is there, supported by Commissioner Morgan? Is there any discussion? I see none. So Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution sixty-two, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter. Jones. Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution sixty-two is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight B, and I will call on Commissioner Womack.
I'd like to move Resolution sixty-three on today's date, twenty-twenty-two Remonumentation Grant Budget Amendment from our Bureau of Equalization Department.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Bolkowski. Any discussion? Do we need to go back over remonumentation?
Had it a long time.
All right. No takers?
Very sexy.
We did that at LA Char on Tuesday.
Yeah. The video was one of our best sellers, so thank you for that. All right. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution sixty-three, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Jones. Morgan.
Yes.
Antor. Green.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution sixty-three is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight C, and again I will call on Commissioner Womack.
I'd like to move Resolution sixty-four today's date, County Jail's COVID-nineteen Testing Reimbursement Grant from my Sheriff's Office. Support.
Thank you, and it is supported by Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion on this motion?
I didn't know I sounded like Roger.
Did I say Morgan?
Yeah. But I would, I would gladly support it, but I think.
Do we look alike?
Well, from my.
Oh, yes.
From this angle, there's only one.
We definitely don't act alike.
No, you don't. So have you decided which one of you I should put down as the, Commissioner Wooden?
Punch one up me.
Flip a coin. Commissioner Wooden, it is. Any discussion? All right. If not, Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution sixty-four, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Jones. Morgan.
Yes.
Antor. Green.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution sixty-four, as supported by Commissioner Wooden, is adopted.
That's great to hear. All right. That is the end of our resolutions. We'll move on to item number nine of our agenda, and this is a report, uh, from me with respect to the Broadband Policy Subcommittee, uh, distributed to you. There were a couple of documents. One is the charge to that committee, uh, that was crafted and, uh, is issued by me as the Chair. The second is the proposed appointments to that committee, uh, and I think you should have that list as well. I also understand that under six point two of our standing rules, I will make that recommendation subject to approval of the Board, so. Six point one, excuse me. So I'm asking for a motion to approve the proposed appointment.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan, yeah, just getting Commissioner Wooden, and supported by Vice Chair Breavy.
I'm going to pass out.
Any discussion? If not, that is not a roll call, I don't believe, so all those that support say yes?
Yes.
And oppose say no? It is approved. Well, Commissioner Green, we will look forward to, uh, regular reports from you and your committee with respect to, uh, this important initiative that we're about taking, so. Good. Next item is public comment. Again, the second opportunity for public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to address the Board of Commissioners of matters within our jurisdiction, you may do so. Please don't deny it by yourself. Give us your address, and you have up to three minutes.
How you doing, Commissioners? My name is DeAndre Jones. I stay on nine-six-seven Temerack on the northwest side of Grand Rapids, Michigan. Uh, I'm here because I, uh, am asking you guys to ask the Kent County Prosecutor, Chris Becker, uh, not about the Patrick Loria situation, but to drop the charges for these protesters. I may not like this tactics, uh, that these protesters use. I love protesting. I believe in standing up for what's right. Um, I believe I have a strong sense of justice, but some of these protesters weren't actually in the wrong and they're being charged, um, with crimes, and so I would like you guys to reach out. Please have some heart, please have some dignity, please have some courage to stand up for these people, even though these, some of them are actually causing some problems. I believe that some of these people actually weren't in the wrong, and I watched these officers, um, lock these people up. And, like I said, I really don't believe in some of the tactics that they do. I don't even like some of them, some of them don't like me. I personally do not care. But I am honestly asking that you guys, uh, reach out to Chris Becker and drop some of these charges for these protesters, because some of them weren't in the wrong. I watched those body cameras drop, and some of these officers still grabbed those people. Also, there's initiative, there's an initiative called the Priority Budgeting, uh, it's called the PBB. It's a company called Resource X. I've been, I'm literally an ambassador for the participatory budgeting process for the city. Um, I've been engaging with any type of community, educating people, you're literally using this platform to try to create economic and systematic change, because I know that, uh, people complain about the city's budget, but people never try to come up with solutions, all they have is problems. So PBB is a form of strategic budgeting that determines the priority and value of city services, assigning scores to each city program based on results, mandate cost, cost recovery, the population served demanded on degree of reliance. This process identifies the true cost of each city department, the services that the department provides, and determining the impact services in achieving desired outcomes. Information derived of the PBB process assists the city council in making important decisions during their budget deliberations, provide more transparent, inclusive budgeting. East, Grand Rap, East, East Lansing, uh, this is from East Lansing, uh, East Lansing happened to be one of the cities that adopted this process.[1607.48] be one of the cities that adopted this process. More than 200 cities, counties, school districts, nonprofits across the country have partnered with Resource X to implement these ideas and actually find out the city services, the service that the county may provide that may not be as useful and those things that actually be useful to the things that can actually create equity because some services that the county may provide does not actually create additional dollars for you guys to actually do things that you guys actually care for. And so, I would ask that you guys look into this. I will send this to every single one of you guys so you guys can't tell me that you guys don't know about this process because I'm very on the first, on the surface, very bold and I would just, you guys have a good day. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, we'll move to the next item of business, which is the Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you. We started brown bag lunches last week. We're going to be doing those three times a year in 14 different county facilities. I really, I started this a long time ago in Ottawa County and it really proved to be a good time just to meet employees where they're at. We talked a little bit about what we're doing at the board and administration level and then just hear feedback, questions, and it's good at building relationships and ultimately building culture. We had three of them so far, very well attended and so, and I know that the schedule's gone out and if Commissioners ever want to stop in and have lunch and see what we're doing, you're welcome to do that. Okay, let's see. We had our third and fourth meetings over the past two weeks with national housing developers that are looking at the 1,700 units that would be developed along with the amphitheater and the green ribbon park. And there's just a huge amount of interest in that project. And of course, I use my presence as a way to encourage folks to look around the entire county at opportunities to develop housing and basically make sure to establish some ongoing relationship with these developers beyond just that meeting for that purpose. Sustainable Business Park Advisory Group just had our third meeting. These are very detailed, complex meetings and we're moving through a lot of information. I think the group has a good spirit and I think we're earnestly looking to, you know, work as expeditiously as we can and come to agreement on, in a very difficult area. Also, had several meetings recently with DGRI, GRI, kind of, GRI is a subset of DGRI and foundations and other community-interested parties. We're probably going to have like a big trail symposium and get everyone together and try to get resources coordinated with the ARPA dollars that are there and other grant sources and foundation money to try to make as big an impact as we can with the Greenway and associated projects. And then lastly, I do have a draft of the strategic plan update and I'd like to bring that back to the board for approval soon. As I've mentioned, it took a little bit longer because Jessica Harris, one of our management analysts, took the time to basically integrate it with the five-year plan. So, the same terms, themes, I think even colors. So, please, if you would, read through it and if you'd send me any questions that you have or comments, then I will make sure we get a final version in front of you soon. Mr. Chair, I'm thinking this probably wouldn't go through committee because it was developed at a board work session.
Probably come directly here.
Okay, all right. And that is all I have for today.
All right. Thank you for the report. We'll now move to item 13, which is reports. I know that there are a number of reports submitted through the online system, so thank you for that. Any supplemental reporting in addition to that? Commissioner Coleman, see, the risk of reporting like this is you have to admit you didn't put in the form, right? But, okay.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'd like to report, I need remedial training on how to input in the form because I thought I did, but it didn't...
Didn't take.
Make the packet. Myself, Commissioner Legrand, Commissioner Womack, a week or two ago at the Asset Board, West Michigan Works, approved the next fiscal year budget, which starts in June. I think it's $33 million and one of the things that they reported, there's some national labor, you know, policy updates currently in proposed form, which would unfortunately impact a significant number of employees, you know, and force them to become state employees. And so, that's something they're working to advocate against because it would diminish services at West Michigan Works. So, that's the brief version of, it was more excellent when I wrote it.
I know it wasn't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? All right. If not, we'll move to item, is that a reporter or are you anticipating miscellaneous? All right. We'll move to item 13, miscellaneous. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I was honored yesterday to be asked to attend the West Michigan Police Officer Memorial at the Bolton Canoe Club and the place was absolutely packed and I believe there was 34 West Michigan police officers that were killed in the line of duty that were recognized and like they do on an annual basis. It was a very moving experience. I got to tell you, I was very disappointed not to see any of the media there at all. They didn't cover it, that I could tell. And it's just these young families of these officers that were killed, young kids and, you know, new wives and so forth. But I just think in these officers, a lot of times, they didn't get a chance to see their kid play in their first Little League game or even begin to walk, you know, they were starting young families. And there were several Kent County Sheriff's Department officers that were memorialized and it was just a really cool event and I hope next year, the word could get out a little bit better so we get better attendance from the general public. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Breevy or Vice Chair Breevy?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to highlight an item that was sent to you for a calendar appointment. Next week, Tuesday, we have an animal control work session and that is following our finance meeting. So, I hope you can all attend and if you have any questions or comments, please make sure to either send them to me or to Al and we'll make sure those get addressed either prior to the meeting or, you know, be prepared with answers at the meeting.
Commissioner Bulkowski.
Excuse me, I just want to take a moment to invite you out to Commissioner Coleman's district today, the former South Christian High, 160 68th Street Southwest. They're ribbon cutting at 5:00 at Disability Advocates and Thresholds. So, come see our space. It's almost completed because every time you say supply chain, you wince a little bit if you're doing building. So, we don't have locks, so just come on in.
Thank you. Thank you for that invitation. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. This is Older Michigadians Week and there was an event yesterday, which was to...
Quit looking at me when you say that.
Which was to sort of initiate, begin the work towards the approval of the senior village in August and yard signs are available and I'll be happy to deliver them even up to Rockford.
Oh, thank you.
There's no age requirement to take a sign, is there?
Absolutely no age requirement to take a sign.
All right. Anyone else? All right. If not, I move to item 14 and call on Commissioner Hennessy one more time.
I move to adjourn this meeting, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, May 26 at 8:30 a.m.
All right. Before I actually call on it, I'll just remind, what time is the work session at 9:00? So, we'll probably take a good, a good five, a long five-minute break here before we start the work session. So, all those that support the motion to adjourn, say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.